Commission. Tonight's meeting is going to be a little different. We normally have citizen comment and invite people to comment for up to three minutes at the start of the meeting. We're taking up the subject of mobile home park affordable housing tonight. And we're, tonight, setting aside this meeting to have a roundtable discussion with the owners of the mobile home parks. Of course, everybody's welcome to be here and we're glad you are because it's a public hearing. I should say a public meeting. We're a public body. We work for the Seattle, for the Kenmore City Council. And they'll make the ultimate decision, but we're trying to take in information and provide them with our analysis. To start the meeting tonight, I'm going to invite our city's senior planner, Lori Anderson, to talk about the quote-unquote "ground rules" for tonight's roundtable discussion. Lori?
Okay. Thank you and welcome, everyone. I think most of you know that as Chair Nugent mentioned, tonight is an opportunity for the owners of the mobile home park properties to give their perspectives, share their questions and concerns. And so, next week, on the 30th, same time, same place, we'll be hearing from the residents and hope that you will all come back and contribute to that discussion. So, ground rules for this evening, and I think we tried to make this clear in earlier sessions, are that this is really the opportunity for the owners of the properties to speak. And we ask that the audience be respectful. And it is not your opportunity to speak. That comes next week. And you're welcome to listen. If you need to get up and leave for any reason, feel free to do that, but please, no clapping or responses or anything like that. Just respectfully listen to what is being said. And I think that the group is going to start this evening by doing just kind of a roundtable. Everyone is going to introduce themselves. And then, there were some pre-prepared questions that we thought might help guide the discussion, but hopefully, it will be kind of a free-form discussion and everybody will get their questions and comments out. So, with that, I'll turn it back to Chair Nugent.
Lori, did you want to invite people to introduce themselves, the ones that are here that own Noble Home Park?
Right, right. I thought we might just go around the table. They may not all know the commissioners as well.
Right.
So...
My name is Douglas Nugent. I'm the Chair of the Kenmore Planning Commission.
I'm Dennis Olson and I'm a first-term planning commissioner.
Mike Vanderland, I'm a, I believe, third-term planning commissioner.
Mark Morton, I'm the Vice Chair of the Commission.
I'm Scott McDonald and I'm a first-term planning commissioner.
I am Bill Schnau and I am owner of Mobile Home Park. I'm about to raise a restaurant.
My name is Chad Ozog. I am the manager at Kenmore Village Mobile Home Park.
My name's Daniel Stoner. I own the Lakewood Mobile Home Park, next door to City Hall.
And my name is Walt Olson. I'm the attorney for the owner of Lakewood Villa Mobile Home Park.
Bo Herrer, I'm a representative of Manufactured Home Communities of Washington, the trade group which represents manufactured home community owners.
Jim Perkins, I own the two mobile home parks right down the street from us right now.
I'm John Millard. We're the owners of Inglewood East Mobile Home Park, just right over here.
Thank you all. Jim, you said you own the mobile home parks just down the street. Are they on 182nd?
181st.
181st, which is this street here?
And Chair Nugent, could I just interrupt a little? The audience is having a really hard time hearing and I just want to remind everyone, I think your microphones are on, but you need to bring them up pretty close to your mouth. And unfortunately, some of you may need to share microphones back and forth, but if you could make an effort to speak loudly and clearly right into the microphones, that would be really helpful. We're trying to record this as well.
So Lori, how do you want to proceed? Do you think we should invite the mobile home park owners to respond to the questions that you sent out? Or do you have something else in mind?
Right. I think the questions were supposed to be sort of a jumping-off point for the discussion, but it might be helpful for each of them to at least start with the first question and then, from there, reactions to other questions or any questions that they particularly wish to address.
So why don't we go in some kind of order? We'll sort of go back and forth. Bill started last time, so I'll have, is it John? Sorry. I can't see your name.
It's John. Oh, yeah, John Millard.
Yeah, John, why don't you start? If you, if you look at the questions that the staff sent out to you, I invite you to respond to those.
Okay, so number one, what is the, what is your five, 10-year, 15-year vision for your property? As park preservations, we, what we do is we purchase and manage mobile home parks in the Pacific Northwest. So, we are in for, for our company, we're in for a long-term hold. We plan to keep it in the family, plan to run them and run them efficiently and try to do, to do our best to keep them nice, those type of things. So, we will, we're in for the long haul. We want to keep them going in that direction.
Thanks, John. And why don't we, you know, I don't want to have you have to answer all the questions first. I want to kind of mix this up a little bit. So, I'll have everybody respond to that first question. We'll all be on the same page that way. Then I'll start with Bill and we'll go with the second question. We'll kind of go back and forth and hopefully, we'll create some flow. John, if you could remind me again, which park?
Inglewood East Mobile Home Park, right on 175th, right over here.
Okay.
Right on the water, on the slough.
Okay. Thanks so much. Jim?
Well, my vision is for the property up and down the street to probably look a little bit more like what you look at across the street, the beautiful building that you've developed with Evergreen Health, the hangar, and the things you're doing to beautify that area. Those two mobile home parks have outused their useful life. They're not financially viable anymore. As I'm sure you well know, taxes, downtown core property, and you've looked at the diagram that shows units per acre, basically, and I'm at the very low end of the number of units per acre. So, it's, it's not financially viable anymore. I get offers on it. I've told tenants that this is the business I was in since the late 60s, when I built it. And, but, it's not going to last forever and I can't believe that the city, it's a conundrum because you want affordable housing, but you're right here in the core that you're trying to beautify and do things like the hangar and everything you're doing right there. And those, to me, do not fit the model for what Kenmore is probably looking at. So, I think, I think there's things to do, but, you know, at the meetings I've been to so far, the scenarios, really, the only scenario I see is more density, including affordable housing as a perk to a developer.
So, Jim, it says, what is your five, 10, and 15-year vision for the property? Do you have a sense, then, that you're interested in redeveloping the property or selling it to somebody who may do that in the near future?
I will never re, I will never redevelop it. I've, I've had, you know, I'm 70 years old. I've had health problems for about the last eight years almost, and I'm not going to be a developer.
You'll sell it?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have a timeline in mind?
Well, like I say, I get offers. I had a new one on Sunday. They haven't quite been to the market that I'm looking at, but I'm, I'm very workable. When I had my individual meeting with Lori, I said, you know, I'd, I'd look at any scenario and I'm not going to be looking at the highest dollar. It's a better developer with a better plan. I'm very agreeable to work in like, something like that out.
Okay.
But it, it needs to be sold for the betterment of Kenmore, I think. And somebody's eventually going to be displaced. Now, if I sell one side, those people unfortunately are going to be displaced, but maybe when that's built, people on the other side, two years, three years later, because that's how long it will take to build out, probably, they, they could have the opportunity. We, you know, I don't know how it would be shaped, but I'm, I'm workable.
Thanks, Jim. Is this working all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Bo, do you want to speak? I know you're not an owner, but did you want to comment? I guess it doesn't fit you, right?
It doesn't affect me, I'm not an owner up here.
Okay. Walt, did you want to respond to this?
Sure. As I said, I represent the owners of Lakewood Villa Mobile Home Park. They've owned it.
Can you, you have to get closer.
They've owned Lakewood Villa Mobile Home Park for as long as I've been a lawyer, and that's 24 years. And the second-generation ownership is now in management of the communities. His 10-year plan is to continue to hold it and not do anything with it, 10- to 15-year plan. He has no plans to sell it or redevelop it.
Okay. Daniel?
So, my company bought the Lakewood Mobile Home Park, which is 6905, 182nd there, right next to City Hall. We're a development company and property management, so we do both. We bought it with the intent of managing it and someday developing it. We knew the city of Kenmore was on the rise, lots of good things happening. We bought it in 2006 and that was before the downturn and all the reshaping of downtown was starting to occur, or at least the planning of it. That, obviously, the, the market went south and we were perfectly fine with maintaining it as-is and had been happy with it. Right now, we have our hands full in development in the city of Seattle and very busy, so we have no plans to develop, I would say, probably a five-to-10-year horizon. If I had to guess, probably closer to the 10, but somewhere between five and 10 years. But that's, that's where we stand right now.
Okay, thanks. Jeremy?
I think John pretty much, John covered it for us.
You guys own the same?
Yes, same community.
Okay.
Oh, yes, yeah, we're, we're a long-term hold. For the next 15 years, we're definitely a long-term hold.
And Russ, you're part of the same ownership group?
Yeah, I am.
Okay. Chad or Bill, do you want to?
Unlike, I may be wrong and someone please correct me, but unlike the other mobile home parks, our mobile home park unbeknownst to me and having nothing to do with me, the city of Kenmore changed the zoning along Bothell Way in a 10-block area called a Transit Oriented Development District, T O D D. I believe that my mobile home park is the only one in Kenmore that's actually in that district. So, my perspective is perhaps a little different than some of the others. Similar to Jim, I'm 70 years old, and similar to Jim, I continue to get offers on the property. The, my five, 10, well, I don't, 15-year, I don't have a 15-year, I'm 70 years old. But my five-year, my five-year plan is that I think Kenmore deserves to have this property developed. It is, I hesitate to quote our president in the terminology he used, but that's basically what this property is. And the, it's been there, I don't know, 50 years. The infrastructure is not what it needs to be. And the opportunity to, you know, if something goes wrong with the infrastructure, that's a disaster. And before that happens, I think that Kenmore deserves to have the highest development in this particular spot. And that doesn't necessarily mean the highest price. I totally agree with, with Jim. I have had no talks whatsoever with any developer at all. I'm sort of holding on. I've had people actually knock on my door at 7:30 in the middle of the, in the dark of the winter. I was rather shocked, but...
Plan to get you to sell?
Yes, yes.
Sell, did it?
No, it, well, didn't work.
Didn't work, right?
Didn't work. It was cold and rainy and I, he was six foot six, so...
What were they thinking?
And it was nighttime. But, so, my plan is that this park at some point will be developed, redeveloped.
And your park is the one, is it behind Kenmore Square, the retail area there?
No, it's behind the restaurant that used to be Tia Roma? That used to be this big...
Mia Roma.
Mia Roma.
Right.
Tio's Mia Roma.
Okay.
And now it's got painted all black, but you can't see the park from Bothell Way, but it's, it's three and a half acres directly behind there and it backs up onto, what do you call that?
Swamp Creek.
Swamp Creek, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. Anybody else want to comment? Any questions any other commissioners have? Okay. The next question is, are there issues that could limit any redevelopment plans? For example, existing zoning, size of lot, critical areas. Critical areas are wetlands, streams, steep slopes, waterfront, shoreline, that kind of thing. So, we'll go back this way. Bill, if you want to pick up on that one, or Chad, if you want to respond to that?
Okay, go ahead. On, can anyone hear me? Directly to the north of the park is the, I think it's Swamp Creek, so that would be a restriction which is there, that I'm aware of. I think it's 150 feet on a setback. That's the only restriction that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And we have the slough, as you know, so the waterfront is a restriction for development.
Right, right. Daniel?
We have no restrictions. We're zoned downtown residential.
Okay. Do you, do you want to elaborate on that zoning? You familiar with the details? We could ask staff, too.
As I recall, and Lori can correct me, but I think the base zoning is 48 units per acre with the code has some density bonuses to get us up to 72 units per acre.
Right, downtown residential, is that the label?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Walt, did you want to comment?
Lakewood Villa is on the slough, too, and a neighbor of the Millards, so...
Right. So, what's the setback requirement for any development?
200 feet.
Property near that, near the slough.
So, the, the shoreline jurisdiction is 200 feet.
Yeah.
But that's not a required setback. The setback is controlled by the critical area rules, which from the river would be 150 feet.
But the shoreline rules are 200, so they couldn't...
Well, the shoreline rules are, cover that area, so there may be additional restrictions, but the, the physical setback is 150 feet.
So, Walt or Lori, do you know if they're, the current structures are non-conforming uses or within that?
I think there probably are some, but I don't know that specifically.
Okay. So, if it were redeveloped, they'd have to pull back farther away from the slough? Okay. Jim?
Downtown commercial, no restrictions that I know of. Downtown commercial and no, no restrictions that I'm aware of.
Okay. Lori, can you help us with some elaborating on what downtown commercial allows?
The downtown commercial zone is a mixed-use commercial zone, so it is focused on commercial uses in the downtown. Downtown residential is a little bit different. It is more focused on denser development.
So, would downtown commercial allow for residential development?
Uh-huh, yeah. I think in the mixed use. And I don't have the code right in front of me, but it may be that east of 68th, you can do standalone multifamily. Can you?
Okay.
I can clarify, I think. The downtown commercial, I believe, requires retail on the first floor, whereas the downtown residential does not.
Right.
Okay. John?
Yeah.
Your buddies already commented, right?
Yeah, no, I'm good.
Okay.
Great, all right.
You can always defer to your, your colleagues over there if you want. All right. Any other questions from other commissioners on this? No? Question number three, I'm going to start with you, John. What are the biggest challenges to preservation of your mobile home park and others in Kenmore? And then, the next, it's a two-part, what would be the most effective actions the city of Kenmore could take to help you preserve your park?
Okay, I'm going to defer to Russ on that.
Okay.
All right, great. I'll speak. For us, the greatest incentive, I'll go there first, would be some tax incentives that would be generally passed on to the tenants. We have a pass-through in our lease that if any taxes are increased or decreased, those benefits go directly to the tenant. So, that would help the long-term viability of the project by making it easier for them to afford the rent and, and not putting more tax burden. We've seen our taxes go up and up and up, and that's, that's going to continue to happen. But if, if there was some type of an incentive zone that were placed there, you would not only help us, but help them. So, that, that's the biggest thing you could do for us.
What about challenges?
Challenges, you, you, again, the ta, the tax, taxes are the biggest burden, you know, the, and you have taxes, fire department assessments that have just come on many of the parks. Those things, you know, we, the, the city needs tax revenue, as you know, but, but that, that hurts us more disproportionately than it hurts anyone else because it's a bigger percent. You know, if you have a million-dollar building, that's one thing, but if you've got a manufactured home on a lot and you have to pay a $400 bill or a $500 bill for the fire department, that, that hurts.
Why does that hit you harder than other properties?
Pardon me?
I'm still, I'm a little confused. You said it hits you harder than anyone else?
But what I'm saying is that if, if the demographic that lives in our community is less...
Able to afford it.
Less able to afford than someone in a multimillion-dollar home would be able to afford.
Okay. So, that's a challenge to preserving the current use of your park because those costs keep going up?
That's true.
And that gives you an incentive to sell it or redevelop it?
Okay, that, I'm telling you what the challenges are. That doesn't mean it's insurmountable because I'm being straightforward with you.
Right.
We don't intend to sell.
Right.
But if we had those incentives, that would help the tenants and help us.
Right.
So, so what's the, those, of the challenges that exist, there's, you know, the operating costs on the park continue to be a challenge as they, but those are, that's what you do every day. You get up and you overcome the challenges, right? So, so we have those things to overcome.
Thanks, Russ. We were going this way, so I'll go with Jim.
Well, again, just to repeat again, I think the biggest challenge for me and you is, you know, how do you beautify the downtown core of Kenmore and keep those parks? Because they're old, they're, they've outlived their useful life, they're not financially viable for me, so I'm, I'm in a conundrum in passing it on to you guys because of this issue of affordable housing. We're all sympathetic to affordable housing, and that's when we've gone over the scenarios. I've been to a couple of meetings where you've talked about TDRs. I'm sorry, that kind of goes right over my head. I can't visualize that applying to me whatsoever. All it is, is density, increasing density with a mandate that goes with it for affordable housing to be attached.
Okay. Walt or Daniel?
Well, I think some of the common challenges that community owners face, I represent maybe 100, 150 mobile home parks across the state, and what they are challenged by, as Russ indicated, was tax issues, utility issues, the, the operating expenses that the community incurs is a reflection of the rent that they must charge in order to capture their costs. But other more practical challenges to the viability of a community include replacing homes as they do get older and deteriorate the setback requirements. There's a vesting issue that comes to play where, in some communities, when a mobile home is removed, for whatever reason, most of the time by no action of the owners, the same mobile home can't go in, even though it might be newer, safer, greener, efficient, or more efficient. And so, to the extent that we want to incentivize community owners to continue to offer this form of affordable housing, there needs to be some relief in the ongoing viability of the communities by allowing them to replace their existing homes, subject to the code as it existed when the community was developed, from the owner's perspective.
Code has been updated to make better quality standards for these mobile homes?
Right.
And you're saying if they want to replace it, they've got to meet these new standards? And that's the difficult...
Setback requirements?
And setback requirements.
Right.
Okay, so they're non-conform, they're in places where current code doesn't allow them to be.
Right. And it does kind of beg the legal issue of, well, what code should apply? Oftentimes, cities will say, well, it's the current code that applies, but that issue really has never been resolved. If this was a community that was developed as a community, as an ongoing concern...
Right.
Back in the 60s, it begs the question of, well, why wouldn't that code apply if it's an ongoing business and has been for that time?
Right. And you're familiar with grandfathering?
Right.
Like if the, the use was legal at a time, but the code got changed later, that use is still allowed?
Correct.
Like it relates back to the original zoning that it was in place at the time they started that use. Lori, do you want to comment a little on the allowances for, for changes to a use under grandfathering rules?
Yeah, there are specific rules in the zoning code that deal with the parks, and one of the standards, and, and this speaks to the issue, is that placement, I'm reading from the code, placement of new accessory structures and replacement mobile homes in existing mobile home parks shall be governed by the dimensional standards in effect when the parks were approved. So, in this case, it does revert back to the original approval.
Okay, thank you. You know, you're sitting next to Daniel and I was thinking, Daniel's your client, but, but Jeremy's your client, is that right?
No, my client's not here.
Oh, okay. Who's your client?
John Dexter is the owner of Lakewood Villa Mobile Home Park. He's a Canadian resident.
Okay. Daniel?
Is it Bill?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Bill raised a, a really good point, that's something that we struggle with. So, when our park was built, it was 1960, I believe. It was intended as temporary housing for World's Fair workers. It was never intended to last this long. And so, as a result, the, the plumbing and the sewer, and I'm sure you've had some of the same issues, we get backups all the time, and it's not from poor usage by the tenants, just old, old pipes. So, one of my biggest concerns, and thankfully, we've been able to manage it and, and slap Band-Aids on it, but I fear that at some point, this system is really going to fail across the board. And it's three and a third acres of, of sewer lines to try and repair would be prohibitive. So, that's a fear I have in the back of my mind, knowing, again, the lifespan, as Jim was mentioning, these things were not meant to last that long. The other challenge is, when they built it, they put these trailers in so tight that you can't get a typical trailer. They're, they're shorter, they're none or more than about 45 feet long. And so, to try and find a single wide that short, I, I have to scour the state to try and, if I ever have to replace one, it's a nightmare. So, it's already, you know, to the point where it really is obsolete. So, it's, I'm going to try and keep it going as long as I can, but it's going to be tough.
When you say replace a trailer, I thought that the tenants, the residents own the trailers.
They do.
Okay, then why would you be replaced?
Sure, so, there are times when another park, for example, because these are, those are finite units, we've had other parks that lose a trailer or somebody moves it, they'll actually pull a trailer out and they'll put, out of, they'll buy one from a tenant who's moving out of the area or whatnot, and then they'll relocate it, and then I've got an empty spot, and then I have to try and fill it. Doesn't happen often, but it does happen on occasion.
So, you fill it because you want to rent to somebody both the trailer and the parcel?
Yeah, because people buying it can't afford to go find the trailer.
But you own some of the trailers in your park?
No, I don't own any of them. What I will do is I'll buy it just to get it in place, move it, pay for the cost if I can possibly find one, and then I will sell it back to somebody.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and then eat the cost of the move.
Okay, thanks.
But, like these guys were talking about, you know, I'm much more about the carrot than the stick. Incentives that, that we could potentially create, whatever tools that are at the city's disposal, that we could discuss the idea of incenting us to keep them as-is or to soften that blow. For us, obviously, taxes are huge, is our number-one expense. Our number-two expense is our, our water sewer bills. And the way that the PUD calculates them, we actually ended up shortly after buying it sub-metering to try and encourage people to save water because our water bills were atrocious. And we installed sub-meters, but the, the way that the PUD calculates those bills, we would have people, maybe four people living in one trailer and one person living in the trailer next door, and their bills were virtually the same. The way that the PUD calculates water usage versus a fixed sewer charge. So, that's a huge bill for us and it makes it, and it's only growing just because their rates are increasing. So, for us, that's, if, if there was some way to create relief or an exemption or a way that they could calculate mobile home parks differently, we ended up abandoning our sub-metering system, which was unfortunate, it cost a bunch of money, but it wasn't worth it. It was, tenants were, were mad because they couldn't understand why their bill was the way that it was. So, so, yeah, whatever incentives that we could talk about, I think that's, that would certainly encourage us to keep it longer.
Thanks, Daniel. So, I remember, and I'm talking to my colleagues here, so correct me if I, I'm wrong, or let's try and remember this. The representative for the Manufactured Home Association, Ishbel Dickens, I hope she's here tonight, but I know she's been an active part of this, was very concerned about infrastructure replacement in these parks. It's, you know, it can be a park-wide infrastructure problem like Daniel's describing here, plumbing, sewage, something like that. And it's hard to do that because it would displace people while it had to be done. Does that sound correct, or do you guys remember more about that?
I think that was my colleague Craig Hillis.
Yeah, Craig brought that up too. Do you want to comment on, I mean, what have other mobile home park owners done when a whole system needs to be replaced?
Well, I think typically, in, in a situation like that, that's when you start to see park closures, is when there's a complete infrastructure failure. Right now, we have an older community ourselves that we're working on. We're not looking at closing it, but the costs are extreme. I mean, it's $4,000 to replace a burned-out power pedestal. You know, we replaced a drain line roughly 10 feet, that's another $3,000, that's just on one home. And start extrapolating that out into the large main lines out in the streets, ripping up your asphalt streets, digging down, and replacing sewer and water lines that are upwards 50, 60 years old. At that point, you may as well just scrape it and start from scratch. We're hoping not to have to do that at the community where we're currently working, but I can understand for these other owners why that might be a consideration.
Okay. I think Ishbel had said something about if the tenants buy the park, it's easier for them to manage that kind of overhaul. Does that sound right? I mean, I don't want to, if she's, if she's not here, I'm not trying to speak for her, but I'm trying to... Hello? If you, if you wanted to comment on that, Ishbel, I'm only doing it to try and get the questions right to the owners. I'm not trying to open the door to, you know, a mixed thing, but is that, is that accurate?
And why don't, why don't park owners have a similar kind of structure? They collect the rent, and they say property taxes and utility bills are their highest costs. Is that because they don't ever put any money into an infrastructure repair system? Because, you know, they know that they could repair, they just choose not to because they're hoping, and I think, and some, I don't mean to put words in their mouths, that they're hoping that the communities will run down to the point where they can make these arguments and say it's cheaper to close. So, I think there are other ways of doing it, and potentially, if it's owned by the nonprofits or by the residents themselves, they will have these funds set aside so that the infrastructure repairs can be taken care of on an ongoing basis.
Okay, thanks, Ishbel.
May I?
No.
Oh.
Not yet.
Okay, sure.
But I want, because I want to get back to Bo, but I'm going to give you a chance. Did you want to respond to that?
Not right now. No.
All right. Bill, do you want to jump in on that?
I just wanted to share that a year or two ago, I actually looked into buying another mobile home park in another part of the state where the infrastructure was, as now described. And it was estimated to be something like 3/4 of a million dollars at the low end to do it. And I don't want to put words in Ishbel, I don't even, what's your name?
Ishbel.
Ishbel. But if you try to divide 3/4 of a million dollars by the number of residents, even if you contribute something year after year, that turns out to be a number that I can't even calculate in my head. It's, it's, the issue is really overwhelming.
Right.
And I would agree with that. I mean, I guess as a response, park owners do maintain their communities over the long run. We have some that are 40 years old and they're still operating just fine, as far as we know. However, we also know that underground infrastructure, just like in cities, counties, everywhere, eventually that will fail, and that's going to be a large expense. You can't realistically set aside millions of dollars and just have it sitting there in a fund waiting for the day that your infrastructure entirely fails unless you wanted to raise rents even higher.
Or borrow money.
Well, exactly, and that's just, why do you want to keep going into further debt?
So, you can keep it going longer, so.
Yeah.
But I'm, I mean, is, is that to say that you guys don't know of any mobile home park owner that had a major overhaul of their underground infrastructure?
I can give one example.
Yeah, please.
Wonderland Estates, which is a park of 109 units in Renton, it was actually purchased by the Housing Authority. And they bought the park for just over $4 million. They immediately then replaced all the Zinsco pedestals that were defunct and replaced the sewer lines, did the asphalt improvements. That totaled to be roughly the purchase price of over $4 million. So, it, it becomes very costly when we're talking about these improvements.
Did they have to displace tenants during that?
Uh, no, they did it while the tenants were there.
While the tenants were there?
Right. And, yeah, so there was some high vacancy when, when they took over. But nonetheless, that was the county that had resource to...
Right.
Lots of funds that park owners typically don't have resource to.
And I think it took them about 10 years to fill it back up. I mean, it took them a long time to fill back. I, that's close.
Right.
But, yeah.
You know, and it makes me wonder, and I, go ahead, John, if I...
Wasn't the purchase price $8 million plus the $4 million?
I thought it was, I know it was $4 something.
I thought it was a larger number.
Right. I wonder if that's something we could kind of work on, is a program by which the city, as the county did in that case, might help with replacing infrastructure. You know, the park owners don't have an economic incentive to do it, but if the city stepped in or worked with other agencies, maybe there's some, it's sort of part of that scenario three, where we're talking about ways the city might be able to help tenants buy the land at the park. Go ahead, Mike.
We did mention earlier on, was there a feasibility of having some sort of development district bonding? Because that's what I really, what I think we're running up against in this discussion, is the cost of redevelopment, which is going to have to involve some sort of debt structure. How do you make that debt structure financially viable over a period of time? Pretty low interest rates right now, but that's the big challenge, I think, I'm hearing you would face out here, is how do you go about doing that? Maybe there's some public bonding that could be applicable to this, but that would be, well, it takes some investigation to figure out.
Yeah, but it's something I think we might, that kind of gives us, I think, the seeds of maybe working towards something that might work to at least help with infrastructure, because I know that's a, a common problem among these parks for both the owners and the residents.
That's, that's what I'm hearing, at least about probably three out of the group here, is there needs to be a significant reinvestment in the underlying infrastructure if you want to continue it there. You may get into some economic questions about, well, how does that reinvestment compare to if you were to build something as an alternative on there?
Right.
And amortize it over a larger investment versus a single structure of a, a mobile home park? So, I, I think it's a complicated question, particularly if you're going to go out and bonding, and, and somebody has to guarantee that. So, I, I think that'd be a fairly complicated set of equations to look at, but it's an option.
I think it's worth exploring, just from my perspective. Did we leave with you, Daniel, on the question, the last question on the table about challenges to preservation? Jeremy, was, were you the next one in line?
Yeah, I was next. If I could just piggyback on what Daniel said about one of the large cost drivers being water, sewer, you know, utilities. We know that in Bothell, our neighboring city here, they do provide incentives to those that are low income and senior, and that are senior. And I know other neighbor, other cities do it, Black Diamond does it, there's, there's a list of cities that help out with...
But they don't apply to mobile home parks?
That, that do apply to mobile home parks. Yeah, yeah.
Not in Kenmore?
Not in Kenmore. So, I'm advocating that we use that as an analogy, as a precedent, and perhaps adopt a measure similar to where we could have our tenants provide documentation that they meet a certain income criteria, therefore, their water would be adjusted appropriately. That, that would help with that, for those of us where that's a pass-through.
Right.
That would be helpful.
So, that might be a model you could look at?
Yeah.
All right. Jeremy, did you want to respond to the third question? In, in addition to what you've already said?
No, I think it's been said. Yeah, we're good.
Russ, same thing?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Bill or Chad? Yeah.
Chad can add to this. To be honest and frank, the question says, what would be the most effective action the city of Kenmore could take to help you preserve your park? And I, I would respond that I can't see any reason whatsoever in the entire world that the city of Kenmore would want to preserve this, my particular park, especially because of the, what is it called, the Transit Oriented Development District?
Right.
And let me, let me, it may be further on, but the city has calculated that on my park area, that they could constr, we could construct, someone, not me, could construct 400 units. And if 10% of those units were designated low income, which is what is one of your proposals, but it's already there as part of the Transit Development District.
The density incentive.
Density.
Is that related to income, Laurie, the TOD incentive?
Yes, as far as I understand. So, that would be 10% of 400 is 40.
Yeah.
We now have 25 mobile homes. So, not only would you get 15 more, you know, low-income houses, but you'd get something that looks as, potentially as beautiful as, as the city hall, as opposed to what is there now. And I want to say, if there's any residents of my park here, I want to say that the reason the place doesn't look this good is because it can't afford to look this good. And there's no incentive to do that because you put some money in the property and, like everyone said, something underground that you don't know is going to make this park close.
All right. Thanks for that. Commissioners, any more thoughts? Okay.
I have one thing to add on the biggest challenges. I think this has, I think this has to do more with mobile home parks in general. To my understanding, when they were built, it was put in as temporary housing. It was not put in as permanent housing. There's a couple of parks in Washington, if you go over on the east side, you have to go over to Wenatchee. They have newer developments. It has the infrastructure, it has the roads, it has the systems in place to actually have a long-term tenancy. In terms of Kenmore Village, just for example, we don't have the garbage truck drive around because if it does go on there, it will damage the concrete. So, we have it where we tore out the, we replaced the concrete to where it actually has to come and back up and where the actual trash cans are at. That road has been replaced. It was very expensive, and with the truck just going back on it, that has started to deteriorate within the past two years, I think we had it done. So, there's many things from the standpoint where, if you don't look at just specifically one park, just parks in general, they weren't built to have it where they're, they were permanent housing. So, if this was to have it where you want to look at actually saving the mobile home parks, you have to look at it from the standpoint, how can we, how can we come in here and make this where it's, it's not going to be a Band-Aid, but this is going to last for 50 years for the tenants, or for any resident? Or if you're going to live there, what would you want to have there where the systems which are in place are going to actually heal it? And I think that's what we need to be looking at from the standpoint, you know, not just one specific park, but looking at all the parks and what, what's it, what's it going to cost? How's it going to look, as opposed to looking at one specific issue? You have to look at all the issues, and how can we resolve each and every single one of them? At the same point, how can we have the housing be affordable? Because that's what we're here talking about, right?
Right. Thanks, Chad. Russ?
I want one more comment on the incentives. If there were possible to get no interest or low-interest loans, we'd be very happy to guarantee those loans with our park. And then, you know, as infrastructure were need to be replaced, we'd be happy to do that, if we could get those loans. So, we'd support that.
Yeah.
Because we sympathize as well with those garbage trucks damaging our water lines, so we understand how that works.
Thank you. All right, I think that satisfies question three. Question four is, and I'm going to start with Bill. Under what conditions would sale of the park to the residents or a nonprofit be acceptable?
I think that's perfectly okay, but I did the math. Every resident would have to pay $250,000. And these are wonderful people, but they're basically low-income. Because if they could afford $250,000, I honestly don't think they'd be living in the mobile home park. So, one of the commissioners, am I throwing my glasses on? Is it Mike? Okay, so Mike mentioned something about bond and the infrastructure and all that kind of stuff. And I'm a retired pediatrician, so I'm not a planner. But it would take a, an act of God to be able to convince, I think, people in this community to raise bond money to do an infrastructure for privately-owned property. And maybe that's not what you were thinking of, but if you want to do that, that's, it all, you know, be on your bandwagon. But to do that, then some public housing authority, some public entity would have to own the park. And if the city of Kenmore has, you know, a spare $6 million hanging around, and you want to buy my park tomorrow, sold.
Yeah, I think it was, we were talking about loans, not a gift. So...
Okay.
The city or a public agency might participate in helping to lend the money or guarantee the money, but not simply give the money to the private property owner. Okay, so you want to, is there anything else you want to say about four, Bill, or you, okay, Russ?
Thank you. We, we were the engineers and designers and developers for, in, in collaboration with the Housing Authority for Vantage Glen. That worked for them, but the problem was, is that it takes a lot of money upfront, and it takes the timeline for, for a nonprofit to be able to buy these assets is very difficult. And, you know, when we're buying, the closing, the time to close, the lending changes quickly. We have to close usually when we're buying a park within 30 to 60 days. That's almost impossible when we've talked to the other nonprofits. When we work for the Housing Authority designing their parks and building their park, they, it takes a long time for them to, to even build one from scratch. I just can't see how they could possibly buy a park.
So, you're saying it's Lakewood Villa, right? Your park?
No, no, ours is Inglewood East.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Well, you're the attorney for Lakewood Villa, and he's, you're, you're...
We're friends, if that works, yeah.
Inglewood East.
Yeah, yeah.
So, lost my thought. You're saying you'd be open to selling to a nonprofit or a group of residents, but it just typically isn't practical because of the timeline and the financing and the complications related to it?
Right, and so it typically doesn't work. So, we, we typically don't sell. We've, we, when we build, we've typically built them from scratch, owned them for 35 years, and continued to own them. But if we were able to sell it, I don't think they could compete with another buyer, because they're too slow.
Right.
They, they don't, and they, the cap rates are such that they wouldn't be able to function in the same... I, I, I haven't seen it work in that, in a competitive market. I don't see it working.
And I think we talked about before, because you brought it up, Rock Residential Owned Communities, where they typically provide, they need a six-to-nine-month window to be able to garner their financing. And typically, they, in order to do that, they also need a certain cap rate that's typically above, well above what the market is. And so, it would, I would think that any park owner would, would welcome if, if the offers could be compatible. If you had a bona fide offer and the terms were the same, but I don't see how that can happen with a nonprofit.
Daniel?
Yeah, I agree. It's, it's one of these concepts that makes sense on paper, but in practice, it's much harder to execute. I probably am a little different from these guys in that, you know, we don't want to sell. We, we plan to develop it someday long in the future, but that's our goal. That's why we bought it in the first place. So, so it would be less of interest to us.
Walt, do you want to speak for Lakewood Villa?
I think the same is true with Lakewood Villa. They have no plans to sell. But speaking for the owners and having known them for 20 years, I think the answer to number four, under what conditions? It would be market conditions. And I've helped close the sale of communities to nonprofits before the last one we did took a year to do it. The last offer we received from a nonprofit included that kind of a timeline with $1,000 earnest money to back it up. And so, until the nonprofits can become competitive to the other bids and offers owners receive on a weekly basis, that's where the work would need to happen to get nonprofits to the table.
Okay. Jim?
Well, I think Bill summed it up perfectly for him and myself. I think Daniel's somewhere in between, and you've got two owners who don't want to sell. So, they're, they're looking to work things so that it works for them and their tenants long-term. I think that, especially Bill and I, you're trying to get a square peg into a round hole, and it just doesn't work. There's, it's, the useful life is over, the financial viability is over. And, you know, we, we want to work with you, but it's, you've got to keep that in mind.
Okay. John?
Just to add on to this, I think the timeline issue also is an issue is if you're 1031 exchanging a property, like kind of exchanges, there's timelines on that associated, where you can be penalized if you don't do it timely. Many, many owners of mobile home parks are investors in, in other types of things. And so, they are, that timeline would, would be tough.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to challenge that a little bit because the 1031 rules allow you to only start the time...
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to challenge that a little bit because the 1031 rules allow you to only start the timeline once the sale closes. So all the delays that might accompany financing would be satisfied before the closing took place. And most owners who are doing a 1031 have already lined up a target property before they've closed on their relinquished property so they can meet that 180-day deadline, right?
That's a good point, but the, what I'm talking about is trying to find another mobile home park to purchase is a needle in the haystack.
But 1031 allows you to roll your money into any investment property, not just another mobile home park.
But what I'm saying is if, if you were waiting on a tenant-owned a rock and you have to wait a year and you have on day one another park that you want to purchase and they said yes, that other park that you're going to 1031 into, they're going to, they're not going to wait for a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're going to want to close within, like Russ said, 30 to 60 days.
Or apartment complex, or whatever it is. Yeah, okay.
So you'd be in trouble trying to get somewhere to put your money.
I see. Anything else you want to add to on the?
That's great. Thank you.
Question four. Do my colleagues want to ask any questions on, related to this? Yeah, Mike?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just saying you answered the, you've got to answer the question I had.
All right. Question five, and this comes in multi-part, so we'll take those one at a time. We'll start with you, John. These are scenarios that the planning commission is, this is very preliminary and these are things that we're brainstorming about and collecting information about. Scenario one is for certain mobile home parks controlled redevelopment. The proposal we're talking about is to control redevelopment by rezoning to designate mobile home parks as a permitted use and limiting, limiting other currently permitted land uses. Part B of that scenario is rezone these parks to allow park owners to transfer their development rights from the mobile home park to another designated area and property where increased density is suitable. The transfer of development rights would be in exchange for the park owner or its buyer having to preserve the mobile home park use of the parks. In this scenario, the park owner could sell its quote "lost" density to an owner or buyer of other transfer development right designated properties seeking to build higher-density housing. And part C of this scenario is that because Kenmore has limited areas that are suitable for transfer of development right density increases and because affordable housing is a regional problem, the commission is interested in pursuing a transfer of development rights agreement with other cities to increase the opportunities and likelihood for TDR, transfer of development, development right transactions to occur. So John, what are your thoughts about and reactions to that proposal?
Can we read it one more time?
Yeah, I was thinking it wasn't long enough, so.
We need to be more specific.
Yeah, right.
I'll defer to the brothers again. Let them.
Well, first, this I assume would be an opportunity for, for park owners to opt in if they wanted to take advantage of these TDR program. For certain individual, for certain park owners, it's been stated, they, they don't want to develop. So I don't think this has, this wouldn't work nor create an incentive for them like some of the other ideas. But, because this is not the grand bargain scenario, correct? Or is this?
It wouldn't fit into what has been called the grand bargain for rezoning in other cities.
Right, okay. Whereas that grand bargain might be a little more attractive. The other question is the, the TDRs, you know, where's the market for this? Right now, we, I know King County has it, certain other cities have it. Where they partner with Sammamish, they partner with Issaquah and others, or Issaquah, I believe, has their own that they can do the TDR program within their, their city limits. But it seems like it might create more overhead for the city to try to enact something like this to where you, you create this marketplace, somebody needs to run it. I, when I've looked at Mike, what Mike Murphy has with the county, it looks like there's quite a few TDR, density credits in the market that are not being taken advantage of. So I'm not sure how, I, I don't see this commodity moving very quickly. So I'm not sure how that would work. But would the city want to, the city doesn't want to buy those credits from us, right? We, they want to provide the mechanism to where we can put those on the open market and then another developer would come and use that for his property elsewhere, correct?
Right, I haven't heard the city buying credits as a part of the proposal.
I, I don't know how, I don't think it's, I don't see it really working.
We don't oppose it, but we have 18 density credits, if you will, that would be left over. Would be happy to sell it because we're not, we're not moving or not building. But I don't see how it helps you. 14, that's right, that's right. Thanks.
Well, it would help by preserving the current use of the park. Then you still get value for the density you don't get to use, right?
I'm, I'm in favor of it, but we're not, we're not, we're not moving, meaning we're not redeveloping. So I, I don't have any opposition to it, but I don't know that it does what you want it to do. But it might help with someone else, but doesn't really with us.
And the idea is that would be the carrot portion, that you get to somehow transfer these development credits into a market that we think there would be a market for. Whereas the flip side to that is in return, we have an MHP zone slapped on us, right?
Right.
So, yeah, I don't think that one works.
Doesn't work for us. We're not, it's not going to do anything.
It would foreclose upon future opportunities that might be more appealing.
Right.
Not that we develop because we, we don't have intention to.
Laurie, can I ask you about this? People on the city council at a recent meeting, one of the council members had said, how does this compare to Bothell? Right? Do you want to comment on that? Bothell has an overlay in, in at least one of its mobile home parks, right?
Right, so the Bothell overlay is a case where they applied a zoning that it allows a number of uses, but primarily it allows mobile home parks. And that's the intent, that that's the preferred use in the zone. And to change that overlay, to talk about redevelopment to another use, multifamily, you have to apply for a comprehensive plan and a zoning code amendment. So you have to make application and then your application comes forward and the city considers it. The difference between that and, and the proposals that you all have been considering are that that proposal doesn't necessarily result in preserving lost density. So it just says the existing mobile home park is the desired use and then doesn't really tackle the question of whatever the previous density was.
So Jeremy, compared to what Bothell has done with some, one or more of its parks, I don't know how widespread that overlay is. Is it all the parks in Bothell?
I don't know that it's all the parks. It's, it's more than one. I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
Do you know?
So they've treated their mobile home parks, they've distinguished between the suitability of certain uses or zoning?
I don't know that specifically.
But let's compare this TDR proposal to what the overlay is in Bothell. What's your, how would you, which one would you prefer and why?
Well, this one, for sure, there's more of an incentive, but that, that one's just punitive. They're just, they're just throwing a zone on top of us that I don't think is necessary. I, I think you're, you create turmoil that doesn't need to exist by telling someone that you're taking away their current zoning and giving them something that they, they're, they have forever, especially if they're not planning on changing. I, I think that's more punitive where this actually provides some kind of an incentive.
That's true. Yeah.
All right. Jim, do you want to comment on this?
I believe it's a non-starter for me. I'm not sure if Bill feels the same way, but I don't think anybody is going to pay market price, or even close to market price because it's not going to pencil out. That does not pencil out down the street. You can't charge enough rent to pay a million-dollar, you know, what, what, pay it back, what they'd be paying in the market. So again, I just think there's, there's two different dynamics going here.
Right.
Walt? I think there's more stick to than carrot. There's more stick than carrot to the TDR approach without understanding more how the TDR would equate in terms of dollars and cents. I think, you know, adopting a single-use mobile home park zone in exchange for an unknown market of TDR exchanges is difficult for any owner to embrace.
Would you find it preferable to the overlay in, in Bothell?
Um, not by much, to be honest with you.
Okay. Daniel?
I don't have that much to add other than, you know, the TDRs, it creates a marketplace. I don't know if there's an existing marketplace that you would buy into or join. I, I would question what, what sort of transaction volume there is and demand for it. As a developer, I've never needed to pursue TDRs. I've worked within the zone that is allowed. So I, I do question the, the value of them and whether they would trade. So, but to answer your question, I would prefer that over the Bothell. Again, it's the carrot versus the stick, right? I'd much rather be a collaborative transaction than a punitive one.
Okay. Bill?
I don't think this is viable, and I want to make two points I don't think anyone else has made. The first is that, let's just say the TDR went into effect and I found some gullible developer and I sold it to him, that's totally cool, and I got X dollars, I don't even know how much that would be. Now I'm left with a mobile home park that can't be developed in any other way, which is, whose value has significantly dropped. And now the infrastructure does what we all know it's going to do someday. And then there's zero incentive to do anything. I'll just walk away. I've already gotten more of my money than I ever anticipated because this gullible guy took my TDR. The other point is that if I was in charge of the finances for the city of Kenmore, my mobile home park now, for the structures that are on it, not the land, the structures, it's approximately $250,000 total for all the structures. If the place is developed to its maximum capacity, that would be $95 million. And the difference is essentially 95 million, 94 million, whatever it is.
Right.
Plus what those increased homes or apartments or condos are going to bring are people who are going to, a lot more people, who are going to spend a lot more money, who are going to contribute a lot more to the community. It, it honestly doesn't make any sense, at least for the spot where I am. It, it's, it's just, it's not even worth talking about.
All right.
Can I just say one comment? Talking with Mike Murphy, the, the average TDRs were selling at 18,000 for one TDR. That's, that's on the ones that last closed. There, there weren't very many that sold, but that's what, so that kind of gives you an idea of, so for somebody like us that has 14 potential unused density credits, it's 250,000. Definitely more carrot than what you mentioned of with Bothell, but.
Not much.
Yeah.
Are those TDRs that were sold for open space though, or for new unit, living units?
I don't recall. I don't recall.
What we're hearing is open space, right. We're hearing that to the extent this program exists, it's for trading density credits for open space. So it's really more of an environmental program than a new housing program, I think. Is that fair to say, Arthur?
It is to preserve.
Housing units. Okay. Okay, thanks for clearing that up.
I actually have a question on the TDR on scenario one. Is this specifically for the development in Kenmore? And this might sound crazy, but if a developer wanted to take a portion and if they found lots which were large enough, would Kenmore allow development of a mobile home park in other areas in Kenmore which weren't specifically in the, in the commercial zone? Because I think the overall goal is to have it where you have the affordable housing. And I think that actually might be of some benefit where you have a house or you have a property which is closer to a higher density, but it's currently not that way. You can have a larger land use on that property and it would open up more affordable housing. We kind of touched on this with, when we had the individual meeting. But if you have it where, if you take a mobile home park and regardless whether it's sold now or in the future, if you take away the long-term value of that property, just where if you have a single-family house and if that house is commercially zoned, it's not going to sell for what other houses are selling for. It's going to have an inherent value on its development play. So if, whether it's in the future or it's now, whenever, if a mobile home park has it where the development potential is taken away, that's one thing. But if you look at the long-term effects on the owner, when they ultimately do sell that property, the next owner is going to come in there and they're going to have to take care, kind of with what Bill was saying, who's going to take care of the infrastructure? And the logical thing to do is to raise the rents. And is that what, I, I guess, is that the, is that something that has been explored? Because what you're basically doing is you might solve it right now, but in 15 years, when you have a new owner, you have a can of worms.
Right, and so we're at the very start of this process. And this scenario in particular probably has more questions surrounding it than the other two. So we don't have any more answers than you do, but I appreciate you bringing those points up because we would need to explore them. Okay. Does that satisfy everybody's comments on scenario one? I think it did. We got everybody's response to that. Do my colleagues have any other questions they want to ask on that? No? Okay. So I could read scenario two. It's a little shorter. But it's still kind of long, and I know you have all seen it. So if you prefer, I mean, I'm kind of reading it so people who are also here kind of know what's going on. So I'd like to read it if you guys don't mind. Scenario two, from the commission that very preliminarily we're considering. It has three parts. Part A is to recommend rezoning certain mobile home parks for greater density, but require new development to include a certain percentage of units as affordable for residents at a level of income roughly equivalent to the housing costs that mobile home park residents are currently paying. The goal is for redevelopment to include at least as many affordable units as the number of living units at the mobile home park that would be redeveloped. Part B is to provide the current mobile home park residents with a quote "right of first opportunity" to rent the newly-built affordable units. Part C is for residents who do not want to move into the new affordable apartments, excuse me, or living units, I should say, provide a certain amount of relocation assistance funds to facilitate their relocation. We as a commission are proposing land use ideas to the city council and we're not proposing dollars and cents and detailed financial direct payment kind of proposals. So the relocation assistance amount would be an item to be considered by the city council. So let's start, I guess, with Bill.
Well, I won't take.
Thoughts on that scenario?
I won't take a lot of your time because I think I responded to this earlier.
Right.
My particular park is in already this redevelopment zone and it already has the proposal for 10%.
Right.
And if you develop it to its maximum, it will actually have more units than we currently have. So I think it's cool.
Yeah, okay. Assuming Chad is, didn't want to add to that?
I don't have anything really to add.
Okay.
We don't plan to redevelopment, redevelop it, but my concern would be, how in the world would you build a building and still keep a $600 rent for the tenants? I don't know if that'd be viable because it says at the rate they're paying. I, I don't know if that, that, that would be realistic.
So we would need to know the numbers. And that's something we're exploring, but there's rent for the land and then there's their costs of purchasing, amortized cost of purchasing their trailer and improvements to the trailer. So we would think of it in those terms, overall housing costs.
That's a wide spectrum, so that'd be interesting.
Yeah, it could be, right.
Interesting.
But I'm hearing, not, you're not opposed to it?
I, it, it, it could be, I, I'm not sure.
It devils in the details, right?
It is in the details.
I mean conceptually.
Conceptually.
Is it something you think we could work with? Okay. Daniel?
Not opposed to it because they're not developers.
That's right.
No offense. I am, and I can tell you that the thought of making the number of affordable homes in a new development equivalent to what you're losing. In my case, I know one of the commissioners had actually gone through the math or maybe it was a staff member. had actually gone through the math, or maybe it was a staff member at one of the prior meetings, and it was something like 20% of the units, 20 to 25% of the units would have to be affordable. And as somebody who does take advantage of the incentive programs that City Seattle uses, those are typically anywhere from 8% to 20% on the high end, which we find isn't feasible. And so, the thought, number one, when you're dealing with construction costs, which are a fixed cost regardless of what somebody pays for rent, the cost to build that unit is the same. And so, but your rent roll is going to go down dramatically as a result of those reduced rents. There's got, there's a tipping point where it's not feasible anymore.
Right. So, if you had enough fair market units, you could redevelop, and the density were high enough that you could have enough fair market units...
Well, there's a problem with that, too.
Wouldn't that offset the loss on those affordable units?
No, not necessarily. Because, and again, the question is devils in the details, as you said.
Right.
But the challenge is, number one, particularly in Kenmore, the absorption rate of units is really questionable. Meaning, I can't, if you said, okay, you can build a 400-unit building, but you've got to make 60 of those units affordable at whatever percentage area of median income, I'm going to look at that and say, I'm not going to build that because I can't expect to build a 400-unit building in a community that has had very little multifamily development. And I can't convince a construction lender to loan me $35 million in a community that has very little track record. So, it's not to say that there can't be an affordability component to the development, but I would defer to the fact that the city already has affordability components in their incentive zoning. Now, I'm curious to know whether Link Next Door took advantage of that, whether there are affordable units in that. My understanding is there aren't.
Spencer 68?
Spencer, is there, maybe I'm wrong on that.
There are.
There are.
And I could give more detail on that if you'd like.
Yeah, okay. I must have gotten bad information. But if we were to do it, it would be much more on the incentive side versus requiring it. And when you're messing with that difficult challenge of getting financing, construction costs are going through the roof right now, and then I've got a significant portion of my rent restricted, I'm not going to be able to get a loan, and it's not going to get developed.
Yeah. Thanks for that. Walt?
I would share his comments.
Okay. Jim?
Well, conceptually.
Conceptually, you're okay with it, but...
We try and make it work.
Right.
It definitely has challenges.
Right. Thanks. John?
I'm good.
Okay.
Actually, there's one question which I wanted to ask on this part. It basically, it sounds like you have a developer coming in, and they're building a new development, and we're based upon, has the right first opportunity to rent. What happens if the developer doesn't want to rent and he wants to sell them as condos? Is that, with another question as well, or am I misreading this?
No, you're not, I don't think you're misreading it, and it has in mind, of course, what is by far the most common form of redevelopment. You're not seeing many condos built anywhere in this region. So, that was sort of why we expected that scenario to play out. But if it were condos, then I would expect it to be first opportunity to buy.
So, Chad actually reminded me of something I wanted to mention, and that is that question of first right to rent. Really, most of these units are two-bedroom units. I mean, some three, but most of ours are two-bedroom units. So, if you're assuming it's a like-kind rental exchange, right?
An equivalent of the current...
An equivalent of what they would be able to rent. Two bedrooms are the least cost-effective units to build because you're, without getting into the weeds too much, your rent per square foot is much less than it would be on a studio or a one-bedroom. So, those are the ones that you don't, you make the least money on.
Yeah.
And so, the thought of restricting those units for, you know, people making comparable rent, that would absolutely not work.
But again, what if you had, you had two-bedroom units that were set aside as affordable, but then you could build to suit the most affordable, or I'm sorry, the most profitable unit that you could with the rest of the density?
Again, the question is how many units?
Right.
How many units are you comfortable building?
Right.
And therefore, you'd need to build that many more to make up for that lost rent.
Right.
But at what point do you get a diminishing return in terms of ability and comfort of bringing that many units into a marketplace?
Right.
So, I'm not opposed to it.
Which is what you were saying before.
Yeah, and I'm not opposed to it. It's just, what's that equation? Is it 5% of the units? Is it 80% of area median income versus 50% or 40%?
Right.
Those are all go into that equation.
Thank you. So, who are we up to? Are we up to, have we hit everybody? Okay. Colleagues? Questions? No? All right, scenario three. Okay, it's kind of long. The commission's been informed that there is a state agency and/or program that assists mobile home park residents with financing the purchase of their mobile home parks in the event the mobile home park owner chooses to sell. We've also been told that the, this program contains certain financial requirements, you were alluding to this, Jeremy, that make it difficult for residents to borrow the funds sufficient to offer a purchase price that meets fair market value for the property. The commission is interested in exploring ways in which the city of Kenmore could assist residents seeking to use these programs, programs that help bridge the financing gap, so that mobile home park residents could finance a purchase at the market price of the mobile home park. Like relocation assistance, this amount or this exact form of financial assistance would be an item to be discussed by the city council, not the planning commission. John, I think we're going back around your way, and he's deferring to Russ and Jeremy.
Yeah, we'll see if it happens, but...
Yeah. You already sort of responded to this in the context of...
I did, and it's in the details.
Yeah.
It just depends on what it is, yeah.
Okay. Jim?
Same.
Same? Daniel? I mean, Walt?
Same.
Daniel? This'll be fast.
Same.
Chad, you want to?
I guess my thought is, if you take any mobile home park, and if the residents want to buy it, if they can compete like any other buyer could, then I don't see why any mobile home park owner would say no. I think the key issue is, are they able to compete with the timeframes that have been brought up? And so, it's just the, as was said, the devil is in the details.
Thank you.
And if I may add, Doug, not add, give my two cents. I, if the residents of my mobile home park came to me and wanted to buy it, I would urge them not to. Because, I truly would honestly urge them not to. The mobile home, this park actually started because the owner of the restaurant who owned the entire property, he put a mobile home park there for his growing daughter. And then, he had seven children, and then he put another home park there, and I won't go through that, he did it seven times. But it was never done with the idea of having a mobile home park there. It was done, the idea, so he could have help in his restaurant from his children who had lived close by. And that speaks to the lack of significantly long-term infrastructure of the place. So, if they want to buy it, please, I would beg them not to.
Yeah, you don't think it'd be a wise financial decision?
No.
Right. Thank you. All right, that, I think satisfies all the scenarios. Colleagues, do you have any other questions you might have? No? We'll move to question six, and it describes what I've already described in these scenarios, and asks which of these, and here's the important part, "Or other ideas would you support or consider to preserve affordable housing or preserve the mobile home parks?" And I guess we'll start with Bill.
Again? Okay.
Well, we kind of went this way, and I think we go that way.
All right, no problem. I'm not sure that a private person, whether they live in or own property in the city of Kenmore, should be or take on the responsibility of providing low-income housing other than the fact that, you know, if they happen to own low-income housing. I have no knowledge further. I have no further knowledge nor insight nor expertise in this, and there are some people here who obviously do, so go for it.
All right. Chad, you want to comment?
My comment has to do more with, if you look at King County and St. Homish County, they make it rather difficult to build a new mobile home park. It's almost prohibitive, if I'm understanding correctly. And so, with that, it seems like Kenmore wants to keep the current ones that they have or try to provide the housing which is affordable. So, like I mentioned before, would they be willing to designate certain areas where there is mobile home parks that could be built? Because the current ones, they're not made to last. So, would they be open? I'm not saying that if you have a developer, I'm not sure that they would actually want to build one, but is that something that they would consider?
They being the council considering a rezon in areas to change the zoning to allow for mobile home parks where it's not currently allowed?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So, I want you to think a little more broadly here. I'm not just talking about preserving the mobile home park use, you know? Is there something else that might provide affordable housing to the people who would be displaced by redevelopment of mobile home parks, or a way to redevelop that would, again, provide them with a place to live that's affordable in this city? So, I, you know, I'm throwing a lot at you with that, but if you want to think about it while we're talking, I invite those kind of responses as well.
Again...
Russ?
Thank you. Again, conceptually, the problem we've had in developing new parks, and we've done that, is that we are in the same density as a site-built home, but a site-built home is more profitable. It's less risk. Building a manufactured housing community is risky. The lenders don't want to lend on it because of the inherent risk in doing it. If, however, the risk is that, you know, you're, the absorption rate is usually slow as opposed to a site-built home where you can get $300,000, $400,000, $500,000, $600,000, $700,000, on a manufactured home, you can get $50,000, $60,000, $70,000. There's a different profit percentage that's there. You're not making as much money, therefore, the risk threshold is higher. If you could make an area where you rezoned or gave an incentive for more zoning, where we could get eight units per acre on something that's zoned one unit per acre, we would be in. We would build a park with private money. But nobody wants to do that. That's the problem. If we could do it in the county, we've asked the county to have incentive zones because it's hard to build a park. When we've gone in to build a property, we did one in Kent, we got through the process and said, the park doesn't work. So, we went back and rezoned it, or we went back and redeveloped it as a site-built subdivision because it was less risky. So, the things that can help preserve communities that exist like ours are, as you said, zero-cost or zero-interest loans to redo the infrastructure over the next 15 years, or 20 years, or 30 years. We've owned parks for 30 years, 35 years. So, that would help preserve a community, offering half the utility costs like Black Diamond does for low-cost residents so we could pass that through. That helps their household, that helps their costs be less, and that preserves the community. Also, incentivizing by reducing the taxes on a manufactured housing community of, whether it's new or existing, would help preserve the community. So, those type of incentives inherently preserve what already exists and would help build new if you went that far.
Thanks, Russ. Jeremy, do you want to comment?
Well, I would just add to that, and this is, might be diving into number seven, but going with this tax idea, which I think is a winner and affects all of us the same, but if, it's similar to the RCW 83.33 where they've tested this out, they've done this on rural properties where you're providing a public benefit. It's called the Public Benefit Rating System, where you can opt into the program, and you'll get a reduction on your taxes if you can show that you are providing a public good. And some of those are preserving a wetland, you've got a four-acre stand of timber that you're managing and maintaining, and the list goes to about 18 different items that you can check off the list. The public benefit that we would be providing would be affordable housing. And I think, and similar to that scenario, as you opt into this program, the carrot is, is that you get this reduction on your taxes. The stick is, if ever you were to go redevelopment down the road, you pay, like you do in the Public Benefit Rating System, back taxes of seven years what the actual property, what the value would have been. So, there's some incentive for you to stay the course. And I think with a tax incentive, not only do the owners win, but the tenants win as well.
Yeah. Okay. Intriguing. Anybody want to comment on that? No? Okay. Go ahead, Daniel.
The idea that I raised to staff a few weeks ago was the idea of providing transition assistance. I mean, the idea of losing your home, having to find new housing when you've lived there for a number of years, has got to be, you know, a very difficult process for anybody to go through. We've managed, we owned and managed our park for, what, 12, 13 years. We've gotten to know the residents, we've gotten to know the kids, we really do care about them. So, we would, regardless of requirements, be very active in that process of transitioning people whenever that day comes. So, if that was something that the city wanted to require, or incent, or however we structured it, that's something we would do anyway. So, I think that, you know, trying to provide assistance to have people navigate the waters of selling their trailer and getting a deposit set up, getting other affordable housing options out there. They just, they don't necessarily have the resources to be able to search that process, and I think there's ways we could help them with that.
Okay. Thank you. Walt?
I would agree with that and point out that, I mean, I think the state is considering its own set of legislation that touch on some of these issues like increased relocation assistance that's not as limited as state law now provides and would give residents more flexibility to use public funding to find another home or an apartment and have the money to pay first month, last month's rent. I think in that respect, it's more properly placed as a societal burden, you know? This idea of affordable housing is getting shouldered by all of us rather than the six parks that are at the table here. And that, from my perspective, is where more consideration could be made, is how to make this a public burden as opposed to a private owner's burden.
Okay. Jim?
Which number are we on?
We're on six, but it's really, it's also seven.
Yeah.
Skip seven.
On six, I just kind of focus in on guaranteed right to rent, the new affordable units. Well, I would say any guaranteed right would have to guarantee the owner, developer of any new units a right to say no if the tenant had issues that precluded them from, made them suspect of not being a good tenant in the long run. So, I don't think there can be a, there'd be a guaranteed right to apply and be considered, I think. But, and as a landlord, I'd be happy to write a recommendation to the right person. I'm sure I'd be interviewed.
Yeah. Are you talking about scenario two, with this right-of-first opportunity to rent if it's redeveloped?
I'm talking about number six where it says a guaranteed, which of these...
One of, yeah.
And a guaranteed right to rent in new affordable units.
Right. I think that was referring to the item in scenario number two.
That's fine.
If there was redevelopment.
And I know a longer time for notice for park closure, I don't think that works for me, because it's already a long time.
One year?
Yeah.
Okay. John?
I like the zoning idea. I think, you know, the carrot idea works real well, especially if there's closures, giving park owners the ability, especially if the parks are really outdated and have problems. Rezoning a different area or allowing mobile home parks to go into an R1 like Russ was saying, and doing 10 to 12 units per acre, high-density parks, I think is a great way to do that, maybe a little bit farther out of the corridor. But what's going to happen is you're going to have brand-new infrastructure, newer, usually newer homes, and I think that's a win-win.
Okay. Thank you. Colleagues? Commissioner?
Yeah.
Oh, McConnell. I'll get to the vice chair, I'm sorry. Yeah. Speak loudly. Lean in. You've got to have to elaborate on what you mean by transfer to rezon, to... The, I, I think conceptually, like so much of this, it's plausible, but I think the, the big question is going to be where. Kenmore's not very big. And most of it's zoned for single-family residences, and I don't think there's going to be much appetite for rezoning that area, those areas.
Just east of your property, there's a lot of land there with single houses on it, on a, a lot of acreage there. And I don't know what that's zoned and whether it's in the flood plain.
Well, part of Swamp Creek, I believe, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, just down here.
Yeah.
South of the breweries.
Right. Or a little bit. No, and I think, again, it, we're at kind of the early stage of taking concepts and trying to turn them into some practical proposals, so thank you.
So, one comment on the rezoning. If you have it where the property gets rezoned prior, and if you don't have it where it's specifically designated for, for low-income housing, it's going to be purchased and it might not have its actual use intended. So, what I was basically asking, if Kenmore would be open to having more mobile home parks, is where if a, if, if a park was going to have it where it can sell its units, it would basically be sold, and if a developer wanted to, it'd have to make sense for that developer, but they can go into a single-family zone which the, which the city has where they designate, and then that can be built specifically for that developer from that piece of property.
Right.
Um, you know, there's lots of workings in there which may or may not work, but that's with a way to have it where you keep the overall goal as to why we're here for the low-income housing. Because if you have it where, as some of the other gentlemen have brought up, if you're building an apartment complex with the actual financing, it might not work out. So, you might have to bring in, I think it was brought up, you have a city bond, so you have it where the park can actually be built and you have many facets basically working together.
Okay. Thank you, Chad. Uh, where are we? Jeremy?
Can I just ask a general question and maybe, maybe Lori, maybe, maybe you know the, the, the temperature of, of what the city council, do they want to see more mobile home parks in the city or do they want to see more affordable housing units?
I'll let Lori respond.
I wish I knew the answer to that. I don't. We haven't asked them that question. So, they're serious about the issue. You know, they put a moratorium on to give time to discuss the issue, so I certainly think they're looking at lots of different ideas. I mean, it's an important issue to them, but I don't know that I've heard.
Because presently, what, what zoning is required to put, if you were, if you had a developer that was willing to, to develop a new park, what type of zoning would they be looking at?
Um, there are different zones. I have a list, I don't have it with me right now.
Okay.
Um, but there are, I think they're mostly multifamily zones.
Okay. So, yeah.
Are there any zones currently that allow for mobile home parks, new construct?
Pardon?
Are there any zones currently that allow for mobile home parks?
Yeah, there are.
So, it's the multifamily zoning, so?
I, I think, I, you know, I don't have it right in front of me.
We can't compete in that space. Too expensive. Have we exhausted questions six and seven on what other ideas you guys might have? I think we have. I'm sorry, vice chair, you've been very patient and I, I forgot that you ran it.
No problem. So, I, I heard Jim's thought on the, the idea of a longer time for notice of park closures. Do the others, if you have any thoughts on that particular question? I, I understand now it's a year by state law. Just wanted, wondered if anybody?
I, I don't know how more time necessarily helps the situation. Um, if, if we were to hire a relocation manager, they would be working to find housing during that time, and when something comes available, you've got to jump on it. So, typically waiting that long, waiting longer than a year, I'm not sure there's an advantage there.
Uh, Walt, didn't you present a, a letter to us that talked about adopting or considering a, was it relocation report and plan and longer? Did it include longer notice periods for residents to relocate?
It itself didn't include a longer notice periods, but from a practical perspective, it takes the relocation report and plan before you get to the 12-month notice.
Okay.
And so, for clients that have gone through that process, it can sometimes take a, a year to go through the process to get approval of the relocation.
That effectively increases the notice period to two years?
In some cases, sometimes less.
Yeah.
It depends on the specific situation.
Okay.
One thing can I add to that is?
Yeah, please.
As a developer, we're very sensitive to the development cycle, right? And if you have to tie up your property for two years before you can put a shovel in the ground, and then you've got another 12 to 18 months, 12 to 16 months to build, and then another eight, you know, 12 months to lease up, that really creates a lot of wild cards for us.
Right. Thank you for pointing that out.
And extending, I mean, the time or the notice requirements in a park closure also kind of extends the agony of, you know, the property slowly vacating over time. And, you know, in some situations, you end up with ghost town-type parks that people have moved from in the first few months or six months of the 12-month period. That would only linger for longer if you wanted to increase the notice requirements.
Right. But, you know, the 12-month requirement's state law.
Right.
So, that's the minimum that it would be, right? Okay. All right. Final question. I don't know which way we're going here, John. Is it your turn or is it Bill's turn?
I think it's Bill's.
Yeah, Bill thinks it's yours. Walt? And I'm going to go this way. I'm going to go counterclockwise, just split the baby on that. So, question eight is that it makes the point that I made earlier that we, the planning commission, are focusing on land use regulation proposals. Actual financial assistance measures could be a part of a future council, city council discussion. What financial assistance measures would be helpful, in particular with the goal of preserving the existing housing in the mobile home parks or minimizing operational costs to owners or fees slash cost to residents? I know that many, if, if not most of you have already commented on tax incentives and that kind of thing, but I'm, if there's anything else, anything else you want to add, I invite you to do so. Walt?
I don't know what else I would add other than to suggest other communities have considered a voluntary-type program, which in the past haven't worked because the incentives haven't been there to encourage folks to sign up for, uh, a land use-type development agreement like situation. For example, the city of Pala offers a development agreement by which if you agree to provide affordable housing for 10 years, then you can have discounted taxes for 10 years, discounted utilities for 10 years and, and, you know, invite the owners to engage in an agreement-type arrangement rather than a rezon.
Right.
Type arrangement.
But that would be optional.
Right.
Okay.
Yep. It would be optional.
Jim?
Well, I can't think of too much. If you, in, uh, again, in, in my case, right here downtown commercial, and I think I commented this with Lori last week when we had a meeting, is that, that I frequently drive around and I see downtown or commercial mixed-use, mixed-use developments. And you see the apartments rent out quickly, you see that ground floor, four lease, four lease. One year goes by, two years goes by. So, I don't know how you could incentivize that by maybe saying, well, if you build it to spec for commercial, but you can put in residential or some sort of, we see a lot now of, uh, what's the term? Lofts, artist lofts, working lofts, things like that. But you incentivize that first floor so that somebody could use it more quickly. They'd, it'd be more interested until at such, such, such a time that a business wants to go in eventually. And I think I've actually seen that on Lake City Way, and so I think Seattle has, has, has kind of dealt with that possibly. I'm not sure, it's just what I've seen from the road and, and heard a story about. But, uh, at, at any rate, it's, you know, again, it's a conundrum, you're dealing with something that is very difficult to deal with.
Okay. Thanks, Jim. John?
A couple of ideas. I think some of them have been, as far as favorable financing, those type of things. Another idea would be with financing for the tenants, if they want to upgrade a home in a park, there's financing for homes are, are, are expensive. It's higher than normal mortgage rates when you go to a bank and you finance. And maybe having the difference somehow between a 6% to 8% to 10% loan versus a 4% on a mortgage, it's, it's costly for the tenants. Another idea was the idea of allowing mixed use on areas where there might be a, a laundry room or a clubhouse, allowing maybe for affordable housing to go into those spaces in mobile home parks, allowing more, maybe mixed use of an apartment or something. Just something like that to allow for more affordability in that, in that space. As mobile home parks are flat, it's great for seniors who, who don't go upstairs, don't want to go upstairs rather, having some sort of option to do a mixed use and allowing greater density in that area might be, might be something that is good as well.
Thank you. Bill? Okay. Well, I don't know, is that Daniel or is that?
I think we're good.
You're good?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. That exhausted the list of questions.
Can I actually add one thing to that?
Please.
So, one thought that I had shared with staff was the idea of if you could come up, whatever that incentive looks like, that it would, that it would be, that it would increase over time. So, it makes it harder, it increases, the incentive increases over time, so it makes a harder decision for us to forego that incentive.
Right.
In lieu of development.
Okay.
So, it's a mechanism.
Yeah, thank you for that. Sorry for not ending where I should have. All right. That completes the list of questions. Again, colleagues, do you have anything else you want to add or ask? Okay. It's 8:45. Our meetings typically last until about nine o'clock. I know we have a little ground to cover for the next meeting, so I want to turn to that. I want to thank all the owners for showing up and participating in this. Of course, thanks to the residents and others who've gone here to participate as well. So, we got materials from the staff. I'm turning, talking to my commissioners, colleagues, commissioners here, and there are some ideas about what the questions, how the questions should appear that will be sent out to residents at all the mobile home parks to prepare them for next week's meeting, which will probably be a lot like this one. So, one of the items, Lori, do you want to take over on this?
Yeah, I, I'm wondering if, uh, right, it would, I think it'd be easier if we, if there are any owners who are ready to leave, they could do that and we could come up to the table and have this conversation, or they could join these chairs so that we can have this conversation.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Does that work?
So, yeah, you guys are welcome to head out. Again, thanks. Thanks, Bill.
Thanks so much. Thanks, guys.
You bet.
Yes, sir. Hey, thank you.
Yeah.
Besides, I didn't do it there, but maybe, maybe it's not a one-size-fits-all. I mean, you're hearing different visions from each.
We think so.
So, there's.
Different parks, you have different kind of zoning.
Right, exactly. So, we've, there's, there's really good ideas, the land bargaining idea, the tax incentives, you know, and all of these can work to preserve and increase supply.
Right.
Which are the two-pronged approaches, right?
Right. Thank you for your time. Yeah, you're most welcome. Thank you for coming. Appreciate hearing you.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, you guys are doing a great work.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, hey, how you doing, Sharon?
Hi. My name's Sharon and I live in Hollywood, Houston. I was asking one question.
Yeah, of course.
What defines affordable housing as far as the rent?
Yeah, this is a simple number. Um, so, we're hearing.
Because we live in a 55 and old.
I'm sorry?
We live in a 55 and old.
Right. Uh, there are different programs. Let's turn now, it's 8:50. Let's turn now, turn now to what remains with our time here and try and prepare questions for next week and address any other matters that we need to tonight. Lori?
Yeah, I, I might just address the audience. You're welcome to stay and listen, but I would appreciate it if you want to talk, if you would go out in the lobby so you're not disturbing the, this conversation. Thank you. So, two things really to discuss, and the main one is the questions, how many questions and what questions you all want to ask. I'm, I'm thinking, we had eight questions tonight, and it's 10 minutes to nine, so we might want to talk first about the format of this meeting coming up because that might guide us to an appropriate number of questions for the format. So, we have heard two things. Some folks have asked that everyone be allowed to speak almost more in the format of a, of a hearing. I, I think Commissioner Vanderland last time was concerned that we might miss comments if we broke into small groups. I think staff continues to believe that breaking into small groups will, will lead to a more efficient approach. I don't know whether that's true or not, but the, the small group approach we were thinking of was having folks divide out by parks, five parks. We would combine the two on 181st that are both owned by Mr. Perkins. Five parks, each with one or two commissioners, staff person who would be responsible for taking notes, and then each small group could identify two representatives to speak at the end of a small group breakout to the full commission. The staff person could augment as needed, and then really anyone who wanted to speak could speak at that point. That's kind of the vision we have, so maybe you have a, a one-hour breakout and then come back together for the next hour to hear from the five groups, something like that. But that format lends itself to a more limited number of questions. Plus, we have an introduction at the beginning of the meeting, so your reactions, your preference.
Would we have to have fewer questions than you've written up already?
I think so. I, I mean, I'm just thinking about tonight's meeting.
Right.
Where we had, you know, there were.
Eight, seven, eight.
Folks.
Seven.
And, and next time where we might have dozens, and that trying to, in a small group format, get through that many questions would take a really long time, I think.
Yep. So, do we want to pick out of the eight questions or so that you've written, the ones that we?
Well, at first I want to make sure everybody's on board with the small group breakouts.
Let's start with that.
And the other choice is to just hear from everybody.
Okay. I, I think it's a pretty good idea. I don't think there's, there's an ideal way to do this.
Right.
Given we have, what, two hours to work with?
Mm-hmm.
And that sounds as efficient as, or more efficient than any other.
Okay.
So, that's my opinion. Others?
I would support that, but I'm actually wondering, breaking down by the parks, that the individual park residents decide which of the scenarios, you can keep the three questions, but they only get to discuss one.
Three scenarios? They only discuss one scenario?
The small group only discusses one. They, you've got to pick one of these scenarios.
Okay.
So, they're picking their favorite.
As, as compared with, so only talking about the scenarios versus the nine total questions or?
Dennis, would we still ask them all the other questions?
Well, would that be appropriate for the larger group?
Well, first, I want to make sure everybody's on board with the small group breakouts.
Let's start with that.
And the other choice is to just hear from everybody.
Okay, I think it's a pretty good idea. I don't think there's an ideal way to do this,
Right.
given we have, what, two hours to work with?
Mm-hmm.
And that sounds as efficient as, or more efficient than any other.
Okay.
So that's my opinion. Others?
I would support that, but I'm actually wondering, breaking down by the parks, that the individual park residents decide which of the scenarios. You can keep the three questions, but they only get to discuss one.
Three scenarios? They only discuss one scenario?
The small group only discusses one. You've got to pick one of these scenarios.
Okay.
So they're picking their favorite.
As compared with, so only talking about the scenarios versus the nine total questions or?
Dennis, would we still ask them all the other questions?
Well, would that be appropriate for the larger group?
I think to ask the whole group to respond to the other questions, we would be back in that time situation. I'm kind of intrigued with the idea of would it be helpful to have the questions and then ask the small group to choose the questions that they want to discuss? I mean, that's another approach. That might be a little chaotic, but.
But if you had each of the different groups selecting it, you may or may not come out with sort of, like here, as we started to go around the table and around the table, we started here, a lot of the same responses and questions. And by doing the small groups, letting them pick what they wanted to address, at least maybe we will get a similar thing occurring.
And with the small group, is that?
I think that that would have to be if then we wanted the groups to report out. We'd move out of the small group setting, have the commission go back to the chairs, have the representatives present what they heard in their groups, and then open it up to others. So I think what Carol and Dennis both are suggesting is that the questions really focus on the scenarios, that the small groups move sort of straight to the scenarios and use those as the springboard for expressing their concerns or issues or whatever. For, and Carol said 45 minutes in the small group spent discussing the scenarios, the extra 15 minutes spent talking about whatever else they want to talk with, and then do the reporting out. How did, what's the group's reaction to that?
I was thinking that questions five through, five and six are really asking more specifically items about this, from the scenarios. And I think they're actually more constructive because they're simpler. Scenarios are messy. You know, it took me too long to read them to begin with, right? So I think maybe we focus on five, six. I had another question that I wanted to put in there. Seven, of course, I think we ask. And eight. But the scenarios, I think, are more background. And then the five through eight really get to the essential elements of most of those scenarios. For example, I don't, if I were a resident, I don't know how I'd answer about TDRs. I mean, I would have virtually no interest in what happened to the TDRs. I'd be interested in preserving the mobile home park. That part's great. TDRs, I don't know. I mean, you know, they don't really benefit from that. They don't hurt them. I mean, it helps in a way perhaps that makes this more acceptable. Maybe there's more of a buyer interest in buying a park if they can trade TDRs. But I don't think we're going to get much on their side about how, whether that works or not. Mike?
I was thinking along similar line, I think some of the questions here that we're actually carrying over from the questions we have are really more technical oriented and really don't get to the interest of the
Of the residents, yeah.
I did like the idea, though, I think scenario one certainly is not really something to move back to. But I think part of scenario two, particularly B and C, the residents, I could see those in there, and also scenario three, and I would combine scenario three with five below, which would really just make the situation of the same thought. And then I agree with you, I think six is another one oriented to the
Scenario two. Oh, six? Yeah, right. No. I think six is relevant to the residents.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you're saying that scenario three.
No.
No, what I'm saying is that scenario three and then five, I think, belong together in the sense that they're probably the same thought.
Yes. So I think all we have to do is ask question five
Yeah.
rather than go into scenario three.
You could do that.
Because that's really the essence of their side of it, right?
Yeah. There's some background that you didn't ask.
Right.
Hopefully, they read this and look at.
Right.
Well, there's a lot of people that ask questions.
We, well, tonight we had technical questions, Carol, and I said, we're at the start of this and we're gathering information. I asked Lori a few times to elaborate, but that's all we can do at this stage. So, Mike, I don't know. Are we in agreement that maybe we just, you know, give the scenarios as background and then we ask five and six, seven and eight? We could ask nine, but nine's an option, you know, for future information kind of thing.
I'm not sure what kind of input you really get on eight and nine.
Oh, eight, I could see it.
Yeah.
Financial assistance measures? I'd like to know that, what they have in mind. Well, that's it. I'm not sure that's going to get to the kind of programs or ideas that we're looking for, one through four. Yeah. Yeah, four is actually the scenario, so we're going to get to that with five through eight. But one through three, we've heard a lot about already in citizen comment. You weren't here for the January 5th meeting, but we got a lot of comment on one through three already.
So you might just head four as my way of background and follow
Yes.
on scenarios we discussed with the landowners and start our questions with five.
Right. Well, no, just by way of background, this is what, the preliminary ideas that we're talking about. But here are some specific questions we'd like your thoughts on.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that question number four would become not a question, but would be background information.
Right.
The planning commission is discussing the following preliminary scenarios.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. And then the next, then question five would become the first question.
Right.
And question six would become the second question. And seven, the third question. I wasn't clear on whether you wanted to keep eight in. Okay.
Yeah, I'm interested in knowing what they think on
Okay.
what residents think about eight.
Question nine was information for us, and I think we can present that in a different way. I don't think it has to be small group discussion.
Right.
We'll have a sign-up sheet or some
I'd like to answer that and
Or something like that.
you know, all the crowds sitting around, like, how much do you make? I wouldn't want to answer that.
Right. Now, there were a couple, right, Doug had another question, Mark had a question, or a couple suggestions for changes. For question number, what now becomes question number one, there was some, Mark had suggested that we expand on that a little bit. So we were thinking we would add in information about purchasing and managing the overall property, ongoing maintenance of the grounds and infrastructure. We were kind of flesh out a little bit what some of those responsibilities would be.
Right.
Okay.
I like that.
Does that sound okay? Right, so we talk about purchasing, financing, maintenance, infrastructure, those kinds of concepts? Okay.
So I had another question. Sorry to, I'll let you finish writing, but I want to revise what I had sent by email to you last week. But the question is really how, I'm going to invite the residents to tell us what, how they think we should address the other interests of other, you know, non-residents in this issue. You know, how do we address the owners' concerns that still, in a way that still preserves or provides affordable housing? How do we address the broader affordable, the supply issue? You know, the fact that there is a shortage of housing around here? And get their ideas on that, because we're trying to balance those competing interests.
I think that could be a modification to what's now the third question. It's currently question seven.
Yeah, I agree.
Do you have other ideas that would balance the city's desire to preserve existing affordable housing with the desire to provide more new housing units generally?
Okay.
Do you want to expand on that, or is that going to get to your?
You know, it might be enough in itself, and that's, if we have background, and I gave that scenario, or that synopsis of the economic forces at work that have created this
Right.
affordable housing problem, that might be enough background to make seven, you know, to give them a sense of what we're looking at and thinking about for question seven.
Okay.
So I think that would work.
Is that all right?
As is, yeah.
Yeah. So now we have this background here, the scenarios, and we'll have four questions, and I'm going to get them translated and we'll send those out hopefully on Thursday. Worst case, it'll be on Friday so that folks will have it. Ah, mail. We're mailing to all residents. They've already received an invitation to next week's meeting. We had intended to include the They probably will receive it either Friday, Saturday, or potentially even Monday. But, but the
They'll have one day.
At worst.
Right. But we were going to mail them out together, but the group decided that you wanted to have more input into the questions, and today is the meeting.
That's fine. What I'm wondering, do the mailing, but if we have email addresses?
We don't have email addresses of all the residents in the park. We just have the mailing address.
But at least if you got it to several in a park, if they want to distribute it, they could.
Right. And the questions will go out with your agenda for next week, and we do have folks already on the mailing list. So they will definitely get that. And then we'll have copies of the questions at the meeting as well. So the plan would be, you know, we'll do, send this out. And so now we're back to that background question, and I was wondering, I had assumed that we would want to give kind of an overview of the project. There will be people here who have not been to meetings and don't know what's going on. So Could be. Although they're not supposed to be participating at this point, just as we did with the owners. This is for the residents
Okay.
or their representatives. Right. So I think we need to do some background, and it's just a question, I'm afraid if we put that, all the information that you had provided into this, they're not going to get to the questions until they've had to read two pages. So I'm wondering if that could be part of the initial presentation. You know, here are some of the, some of the forces at work that we're trying to address.
Well
It's your decision, the group's decision.
Yeah, I'd be inclined, the more they, the sooner they see it and understand where, what we're working with, what every city in this area is working with, the economic forces, I think the better informed their answers to the questions are going to be.
So do you all know what, it was attachment number, what attachment? Or maybe, I actually put it in the cover memo. So
But we didn't do that with the park owners, so it's kind of a comparable. I mean, we didn't give that same question to the park owners. So, I mean, we're treating
The background, you mean?
The background, we're treating this a little differently, and my question would be why?
Yeah, because part of it is, we were talking economics with the owners already. We'd been talking economics with them back in November and December and January. But when we heard from the residents, we didn't get much of a, the comments did not address the economics, their economics, yes. I get their economics. But the other economic forces at work here that make housing more expensive everywhere in this area, including Kenmore, that's why I thought it was better suited for the residents' background information. Mike?
I think maybe the question we want to answer right up front, maybe posing as a question, so why are we doing this? Fucking in their lives.
Yeah.
The question would
Right.
I think we should answer that for them. That would be helpful.
Yeah, thanks for saying that. And I don't mean to interrupt, but I was, because I really want to get on that point because I'm seeing a lot, to the extent I see people comment or hear them comment, city council and to us and that kind of thing. I get the sense they think the city is changing things for the worse, or trying to change things for the worse. And right now, and I think what we need to convey to them is, to the residents, is here's the way it is now. These owners could sell these properties and have them redeveloped, and you would be displaced, the way it is now.
Right.
If nothing happens, that could happen after the moratorium expires. What the city is doing, both through this commission and on the council, is changing things, looking at ways to change things for the better for you.
Right.
Because there's a lot of hostility I'm seeing out there toward, what's the city trying to do to us now?
Right.
What they're trying to do is compromise and make it work for everybody as best as possible, and I think we got to say that upfront.
Well, I think we tried to say that in the cover letter.
Yeah.
And again, I'm wondering if that's my perspective
Yeah.
and you may not share it. So that, this is your choice. I think if we, if we want to keep a, do a really short paragraph that basically says exactly what you said, Doug.
Yeah.
Why are we doing this? A very short presentation or paragraph, half a paragraph, that sits on top of the questions when we send it out, I get that, and I think that would fit. I think if we try to go through all of these 12 points at the top of this list of questions, I would think it's going to be confusing. And if we want to make those points, I would rather do that in a sort of condensed, specific presentation.
Oral.
Oral, at the meeting.
That's the point.
Well, I don't think we need to go and want to go through, this is a five-minute very close to what you just articulated. How are we doing this?
Mm-hmm.
We're doing this because this train is headed down the track. Options to make this. We're asking for their input. Don't have answers? Probably thought Paul would use that. That's a good way to say it. I mean, hard charge from the city council.
Yeah, but I'm, my concern is there are multiple sides to this issue, right? We just heard from the owners. Residents are going to say very different things. We've already heard from them to some extent. So I wonder how much each side hears the other. So that's why I wanted to put something in front of the residents, saying, here's what the other, the other sides to this issue are. Because I, I, I know very well, you know, they've made very clear what their concerns are and the hardship they're, they're faced with. But there's, the, the other two sides, two or three sides to this issue that isn't getting discussed really, or it, there's not a real overlap between what the residents are saying and hearing, and what the owners are saying and hearing, and what the broader issue of supply of, of housing generally is. So let me get a show of hands on who wants to take out the economic synopsis. From the letter. Yeah, the oral presentation, we're all, we're okay with. Is, is there a majority that's okay with that? Okay. I could, I could try, I mean, but, go ahead.
That's what I thought, it was a little bit too long.
Yeah. I know. I got to tell you, this issue is complex, right? Every city in this area is like wrestling with the multiple sides to this issue, and I got it down to a page, and I'm getting told that's too long. But I, I know what you mean. It's, it is long. It's a complex issue. Yeah. I'm okay with that. I'm, I'm, that's where I was going with the show of hands. It sounds like there's a majority who says, let's leave it out of the letter. Let's just present it orally at the start of the meeting, which is fine. My pride of authorship is not at stake here, so, they don't have to be great words. I'm just trying to convey it as simply as possible. Do you want to reduce the oral side of it then?
Well, we can do it a couple ways. I was going to give sort of the background, the history, the city council, what the charge was, the moratorium, just basic factual information. I could then turn it over to Doug if he wants to give his condensed synopsis. Or I could take a stab at it, either way, and then at that point, we'd talk about the format of the evening, people breaking into groups.
Well, I am one of seven commissioners, so I don't want to look like this is my, I want agreement on this. I think it's better if you give the condensed synopsis along with the rest of the background. I am willing to try and condense it if the commission is willing to give me, you know, the authority to do that in an email, and we'll copy you on it. We can't really trade emails on this under the OPMA, but at least I could, you would know what's going on, and it's supposed, I'm going to take what I've already got and just try and simplify it, so substantively, it should be essentially the same. Is that okay? And I'll give, great, and I'll send that to Lori, and we'll hopefully have a shorter oral presentation on the economic synopsis. All right. Anything else, Lori, for next week?
Am I forgetting anything?
No, I think, you know, I'm, I'm fine with if we take out the questions, you know, the three and four about, you know, why do you, why is this living situation important? Because you said you've heard that, so one thought maybe we either provide what we've heard, and is there anything else? I think it's important to not presume that you, that you've heard from everybody.
Oh, there's no way we've heard from everybody.
No, I know, I'm just saying, but I, I think that as you gave the owners an opportunity to sort of express what is unique to them for their different parks, we might get sort of a similar response from the residents of these, there might be a different response. You heard a lot from one particular park, but we haven't really heard, or we don't really know if we've heard from other residents about their perspective. We're assuming it's similar, but we, we don't know that, so maybe there should be some opportunity to have people sort of express why this, why they like living where they do.
Right. Well, here, the only, first of all, it's not that I don't care about the answers to these questions, or I think we've heard everything. It's that, you've already said at the start, we have limited time, and we have to try and pare this down. So of the nine questions, I thought those are three that we probably already had more, enough information. If we have to pare it down, those are the most likely to be taken out. If we put them back in, I don't think we've pared it down, but, so we get benefits on both sides, benefits and costs, so.
Well, you can do it either way you want. It's a commission decision. I mean, don't look to me for.
I would, if, here's, here's how I would do it. We have limited time. I, otherwise I wouldn't be, we wouldn't be wrestling with this. But I would like to start with five through eight, and then if we have time left over, because we really want to know five through eight, for sure. I think we're going to also hear, we're going to have other meetings down the road, February, March, right? And we're going to, I think, hear one through three a lot in those meetings. But we, oh, I mean, well, in the future, I think we're going to hear more from more park residents who come in at Citizen Comments and want to talk about their experience and what, you know, why they love it, and what's the challenge about it, and what they think of this process generally. But I also think we can, if we have time left over after five through eight, say, so please, you know, give us your thoughts, anybody in this small group, what you like most, and what your plans are for living in this park or living elsewhere. But I, I think we save that for the second, or the end, and only if we have time. Does that sound more efficient?
It does, and I looked at this, and that's why I came down to the same, what, what does it need, what do we absolutely have to have about this discussion? Have those for seconds out of close. I think we, we need to focus on those, and then, but I think what we can do is we can send comments in the next three.
Yeah.
Invite you to come back and to provide that additional information. We would like to hear from that. I think we need to know this. Otherwise, we won't know how to move forward in the next.
Okay, we, go ahead, vice chair.
I think it's valuable, in case I, I do.
Well, I mean, another option we could have would be to have handouts at the meeting and ask for written responses to some questions, or we can do sticky notes on poster boards, or, I mean, there are ways to ask questions other than in the small group discussion. Yeah, I, I don't think adding it to the list of questions would be helpful. I think that would be distracting. I do think that if you go through five through eight, and you say, for example, at the end of that conversation, you said, we're really interested if people want to take the time to write to us about this topic. That would be really helpful. Yeah, mine. Right, I, again, I think a handout, maybe when folks are leaving the meeting, where we talk about interest and willingness to hear comments. For example, you know, what is it you like, what is it, I mean, we could give examples of these questions, and then have them send emails to me. That would be fine. So I think what I'm hearing is, I'm going to revamp this, we'll have the scenarios in the background. Five through eight will be the limited questions. We'll have a handout at the meeting that elicits additional responses. The background summary will give general information about the project, where we are in the project, what the timeline of the project looks like. Then I will incorporate the comments, and, and Doug, I think really, I mean, you've done a great job lining this out, but I think really what you're talking about is the balance, and, and if we could, I, I think if we can somehow focus on that, that the reason these scenarios are crafted the way they are are to strike a balance, because the density is important as well.
Right.
I, I think that's about as simple as it needs to be in an introductory presentation. So you are.
I think I've got to say why is density important, not just, it's important. I mean, I'd read it and go, why?
That's fine. Again, I'm hoping that it's not going to be a 12-point presentation, because I'll be standing up there forever. So we'll do a, a summary.
And, you know, I'll send you something if you think, I don't, I think we could take this out or that, like we did last time.
Right.
We'll do it.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, everybody's on board with the format. Do you want to assign our folks interested in particular parks, or are we going to sort of randomly assign you? And then Arthur and Mike and Debbie and I and Bridget will be the scribes. We talked about doing it on a board, but that's really hard to do really fast, so I think we're going to actually do handwritten notes that we can then share.
What notes?
The staff are going to write notes from the small group discussions, and then small groups will identify their representatives who will speak to the whole commission.
Okay.
Um, we could, yeah, if, maybe for the representatives, if they want to.
So are we going to have chairs and certain tables, you know, about this whole chamber area?
Yeah, I think.
And this will be Lakewood Villa over here, and this will be Inglewood East over there, and this will be, okay.
Right, I, that was the concept.
Yeah, we need a slew in there somewhere.
We, we will not have microphones because of that format, so it'll have to, people will have to speak up, and, and we will have a Spanish translator here. Particularly, we've heard that the park here is 90% Spanish-speaking. But I know that there are other parks that have Spanish-speaking residents, so we may need to call her over in some circumstances to another group.
So assigning commissioners to different parks, we have seven commissioners, six tonight, you know, Mike's got a challenging work schedule. Can we all make it next week? Yeah? Yeah. Yeah, oh my gosh, and Kent? Good luck. Okay. Yeah.
So Scott should pair with someone. That'll be a group that will have two commissioners. We only have five groups.
Five groups, okay.
Right. That's a good idea. I like that.
Do we want to choose, you know, which park you would sit with? What's that? I'd be inclined to listen to the residents at these parks on, that are zoned downtown commercial or downtown residential, yeah.
Okay, so Doug is 181st, other preferences? Okay, so Mark is doing the one on 182nd. Okay, so we have the one on Bothell Way, and then the two down by the river are the remaining parks. And those, the one next door and the two by the river are the biggest of the parks.
No, I'll do, I'll do the one next door. It's zoned downtown commercial, right?
No, that one is downtown residential.
Okay, is that the biggest?
No, it's not. The one down, the ones, a couple of the ones down by the river are the biggest.
Oh. Takers?
Okay.
You going to go down by the river?
Okay, so some, I need another commissioner to go with Scott, so he has a second person. Okay. Okay. And Dennis, do you have a, okay, so I'll put you with one of the bigger parks. And we'll assign Mike Mulcair. Okay.
Is that it? We're set?
I think so.
Questions?
We need to cancel a meeting.
Which one?
February 20. The day after President's Day.
Because the council's meeting that night?
Potentially. We don't know that. They may not. They may cancel the meeting, but we also don't have administrative staff. And I also am not available that night, so.
Do I hear a motion to cancel? Do I hear a second discussion? Favors say aye. Posse say nay. Extentions none. Motion carries. Yeah. Anything else? This meeting is hereby adjourned.